All right, good afternoon. It is two o'clock. We're glad to see everyone here today on this wonderful fourteenth day of May of 2024. This time, City Council is convening in chamber, or convening in open session, and we are immediately moving to chambers for our executive session. Plan today is for us to finish up executive session and then move to a work session where we will recognize several individuals from Lubbock one-on-one, as well as our interim chief of police, who will be leaving us shortly. And then hopefully promptly at 3:00 PM, we will move to our regular agenda. So at this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: Pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, and the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and finally Personnel Matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. This time, we will be in recess to executive session. All right, good afternoon. So good to see everyone here. We've got a full house and a lot of fun things and exciting things to do today. I know that sounds like an oxymoron when you talk about a city council meeting and fun things, but yeah, get some recognizing people today. So we are back in session. We've held an executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code, and now we are moving into our work session, where we are going to hear and discuss presentations regarding the recognition of the 2024 graduates of Lubbock 101, as well as recognition of our interim police chief Gregory Russian. So with that, I will turn it over to you at this time, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We're going to start today with a quick little video we can all watch. So we're going about the 101 video a little different this year. So watch and tell us what you think. Curtis?
All right, class, let's run it back. You signed up because you wanted to learn a thing or two about how your city works for you. Coming in after long days at your respective jobs and sitting down for each class session is no easy feat, especially when there's a lot of information being presented. And let's face it, there was a lot of information. But hey, at least we fed you. You also got to roll up your sleeves and participate in some exciting field days. Everything from making street signs, seeing how LPD protects and serves, including watching K-9 Renzo play with his favorite toy, operating heavy machinery, supervised of course, driving vehicles that might as well look like Transformers, again supervised, to finally turning up the heat with Lubbock Fire Rescue. All in all, you gained a new understanding of how your tax dollars work for you and how the city of Lubbock contributes a multitude of services, day in and day out, to keep the community provided for and protected. So congratulations, Lubbock 101, class of 2024.
Okay, now we'll run our more traditional video in the background without the sound, but thank you to Curtis and Lacy and the whole team for putting that one together. Mayor and council, this is our graduation for the 2024 class of Lubbock 101. We had 24 people begin, and we had 24 people finish, so we're very proud of that. This group just went through eight sessions, sessions titled Orientation and Did You Know? That is trivia about the city of Lubbock. One of those points, did you know that if you laid all of the lane miles of street in Lubbock out heading to the northwest, you would end up only 200 miles short of Anchorage, Alaska? All kind of fun stuff like that. A session on Lubbock is a growing city. The ever favorite, Your City at Work, followed by Your Money at Work. So great nights for both of those. Fun in your city, where does it come from? Your water system. Caring for the community, and the final session, Lubbock is a safe community. Throughout these eight total classes, these 24 individuals met in eight different city facilities. They had presentations and discussion with 18 different departments over the five classroom sessions totaling about 12 and a half hours of class. 12 different departments that participated in the field days, total of about 12 hours. All in, lots of time, lots of dedication from these people, and we greatly appreciate it. Also want to quickly thank all of the city staff. They put a lot of effort into doing this, and I think they again have done a great job. And specifically, and this class is because I do read the survey responses. Thank you to Jack Todd and the Lubbock Professional Firefighters Association for lunch. That was the most highly rated food of the entire session. So Jack, if you're listening, you did it again, and thank you for doing that. What did we learn in the survey responses? Apparently, the class notebooks are great favorites. Those, of course, were also part of many of y'all's orientations two years ago and will be again after tonight. We actually had students say, hey, could we do this a little longer? We only had one that said, Jarrett, you talk too much, and we need to get you back on the timeline. But the rest of them wanted longer ones, longer tours. They've asked for 101 challenge coins, and the one that we're going to have to ask the council to work on, why can't we control the weather on the field days? Got a couple of days that were a little challenging. So with that, excuse me, we're going to go ahead and ask Mr. Brian Bearden to start making his way up. Brian runs our pipeline division. You saw some pictures of people using heavy equipment. Used to be a secret, it's not anymore. Brian times them as they do their challenges for that. Now he's going to give out some awards.
Thank you, Jarrett, Council, Mayor. And thank all of you guys that were, guys and gals, that were students. Appreciate y'all taking the initiative to want to know what we do and why we do it. And I think it's always a good thing for you to know that because a lot of people always seem to see the city employees out working and always wonder, you know, why is there two or three standing there and looking in the hole at what the guys are doing? So I hope that y'all got to get some of your questions answered on those kinds of questions. And like Jarrett said, we did. We, I think about three years ago, we started, I asked Jarrett if we could do this, to give out awards for the top two contestants in the, what we call the soccer ball challenge. The year before, we did a bowling pin, picking up a bowling pin, setting it in a piece of PVC pipe. And that one took a little bit longer. And then, of course, like you said, the weather was pretty bad this time. So at the end of it, I think we wound up taping the soccer ball to the top of the cone because the wind kept blowing it off. But nevertheless, it was fun. I hope y'all had fun. I hope all of the, our staff was very informative and gave you the answers that y'all were looking for. And, you know, I'll send that out. If y'all ever have any questions or anything, look us up, and we will be more than happy to answer any questions that you don't feel like you got answered. So again, thank y'all for taking the time to do this. Think it's a wonderful program. My staff enjoy it. We every year look at a way to try to make it better and to try to make it funner, to make it where y'all can enjoy it. But with that being said, we're going to give out two awards for the top two, I guess I'll call them contestants, that participated in there. And the second place goes to Samuel Higgins with a time of 48.11 seconds. There's a little token there. I think it's got the Lubbock 101 logo on it. So put it on your desk, or take it home and let the kids play with it in a sandbox. And the top one was Mario Vasquez with a time of 44.34 seconds. Thank you. And there's applications underneath the track.
Yeah, scan the QR code, and it'll take you right to the employment page. Brian, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Mayor, if you and the City Council wouldn't mind going down? Okay, for our, for our next item today, as you saw in the video, one of the things that the class participates in is creating a Lubbock 101 street sign. We tell them from the beginning, this is your chance to legally own one of Lubbock's very own street signs. The hook to that is you have to have perfect attendance to do so. Very pleased to report that out of this session of 24, we had 12 students have perfect attendance to go through that. We do a completely, totally random, generated by the internet, drawing from amongst those 12. You do have to be present to win. And it's going to go to Mr. Arthur Parer this year. Arthur, come on up.
All right, Arthur, hold on just a minute. I got a question for you.
Yes.
What was your favorite thing about this program?
Oh, the airport trip.
Airports! Oh, okay. The airport, what was so good about it?
It was just exciting. You don't ever get to the airport from the opposite side of the terminal. And so much that we saw the dedication of the people there.
That's great. Well, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're now going to call all the students out, one at a time. Give them their certificate. Students, if you would, stay up at the front. We're going to get a big group photo as we go forwards. We will start with Greg Byer. Greg is one of our city employees, one of three that went through at this time. And he didn't win the backhoe challenge. Next is Jeff Caperton. Mark Carter. Ms. Monique Garrett. David Hodges. Samuel Higgins, the newest city employee in the pipeline division. Kathleen McCutcheon. Julie McMahon. John Moncrief. You're wearing the wrong hat, John. Kristen Murray. Arthur Paray, making his second appearance tonight. Katie Perkowski. Elizabeth Laura. Valerie Longoria. Santiago Ramirez. Mitch Ratliff.
We're seeing if y'all are paying attention, and we're changing the order.
Danielle Raven Ward.
You gotta walk the line. You gotta walk the line, Danielle.
Wait, she didn't even give us a, you did great. Good job.
Marie Rieger. Ruby Robinson. Teresa Rodriguez. Niels Thomas. Mario Velasquez, also a new city employee. Next is Martin Wells. Mr. Wells could not be here with us today, so we'll get his certificate sent to him and bring up Ms. Lindsay Wren. So as y'all are getting ready for your group photo, on behalf of myself and the staff, we want to thank you all again. You were a great class. We really enjoyed having you.
Curtis, stand everybody in front. I'll do what Curtis tells me to.
There you go.
There we go. Get her out there. Good job. Way to take that initiative. Good job, everybody. Council, y'all have to stay here. Y'all just stay in here. I was proud of you. I was like, change the trend. Where's Chief Russian at? Jennifer grabbed that. Where's the other area?
Okay, Curtis, if we could get you to pause that video for us, please?
He gets to come, oh, he knows she's coming down the road, too.
Just go down the road. Get on the handshake. Thanks, thanks so much.
We can hold it. I'm going to read something real quick. I'm going to step close to this microphone so everyone can get this recorded and ask council, you know, if you've got some words. Maybe this expresses our appreciation to you, but it's not enough. No matter what we put together, it's not express our appreciation. But we do have a special recognition on behalf of all of us standing up here today. Greg Russian graciously emerged from retirement to answer the call to serve at the Lubbock Police Department since September of 2023, enduring his brief but impactful time as interim police chief. He served the community with dignity and grace. He earned the respect and trust of the officers at LPD and prioritized the safety and well-being of our citizens. Chief Russian brought 40-plus years, I'm not trying to date you or anything, of extremely valuable experience in law enforcement to Lubbock, having served 35 years at the Plano Police Department and chief for 18 of those years. Additionally, Chief Russian utilizes previous experience as an FBI agent, deputy sheriff, sergeant, and deputy city manager in his leadership role. Chief Russian's commitment to law enforcement remains evident, and his educational achievements, such as his bachelor's and master's degrees, certifications in public management, and as a Texas master police officer, and his past position as president of the Texas Police Chiefs Association showcase his ongoing commitment to leadership. And throughout his career, Chief Russian displayed knowledge, patience, I know a lot of patients, professionalism, especially during his time in Lubbock. So it is appropriate to recognize interim police chief Greg Russian for all he has done to better our community, to ensure public safety, and to enhance the quality of life for our residents. He dutifully upheld the values of Lubbock Police Department with professionalism and integrity, and we are beyond grateful for his leadership and guidance. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the great city of Lubbock, do recognize Chief Greg Russian. In Lubbock, and encourage all citizens to join us in thanking Chief Russian for his service and commitment to the LPD, and again, express our sincerest gratitude for his outstanding contributions to our community. And we also wish him best wishes moving forward, especially that grandkid time. Thank you, Chief Russian. We could not be more grateful. She get on her toes, it's like this. Well, first of all, it's been an honor to serve as the interim police chief, and I will always be proud of being a member of the Lubbock Police Department. I'm very appreciative to the city manager, the mayor, and council for having faith in me and allowing me this opportunity. You know, like most professions, there is ongoing change required in police departments, from policies to operations, and there are different approaches to the job. I want to thank my staff and all members of the police department for being open-minded, problem-solving, and working hard as a team to get us on a good path for our new chief. Actually, he was here today, you know, meeting in just a minute, I believe. Lubbock is blessed to have a passionate and dedicated police employees that work every day to keep our citizens safe, and they appreciate your support. My wife and I will always have a special place in our hearts for Lubbock, and I'll continue to follow the Lubbock Police Department and the news and the continued successes. And I am going to miss everybody. I'm going to miss the lack of traffic that they have here. You know, when I first came here, I was trying to figure out, you know, how long it was going to take me to get to work and when the rush hour was. There is no rush hour. 20 minutes anywhere. You know, I never saw a groundhog before, or not a groundhog. Prairie dog, there you go. And I've saw, I saw a lot of prairie dogs since I've been here. And I am going to Chicago, and they call that, and they brag about it, the windy city. It's not even really about the wind, but they brag about it like it's the wind. Well, I'm telling you, and I'll tell them, West Texas has the wind, not you guys. They have the bragging rights, not you. So I really have had a great time. I'm going to miss the employees more than anything, both the people I work with at the city and the different departments, as well as the great employees that you have at the police department. Let me tell you, from 40, going on 44 years of service, I have never seen a greater bunch of folks than you have over there at that police department. Dedicated and... You can feel safe that they're out there guarding you 24/7. Even when you sleep, they're out there guarding you. So next time you see a police officer thanking for what they do, I'd appreciate that. And thank you all very much. Appreciate it. All right, Jared, well, that timing worked out well, didn't it? All right, good job, everybody. All right, we are now continuing and moving from work session and continuing to move into our open session. And today, I'm pleased to have a friend of mine with us today. Extremely, extremely good man who married way above his head and just a, just a really, really good leader in our community. Brian Brownlow with Lakewood Methodist Churches here to lead us in our invocation. If you would please stand and remain standing as we move from the prayer immediately to pledges led by Mayor Pro Tem Patterson Harris. Brian, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
If you'll please bow at me. Hallelujah, Father, we thank you for goodness. We thank you for your provision. We thank you most of all for the salvation that comes through Jesus Christ. Father, I thank you for the Father, I thank you for the men and women who have dedicated their lives to serving this community. Those who work within the city, our police department, every one of those folks who dedicates themselves to keeping it safe and to caring for the needs that we have. Father, we pray for those who have been charged with making decisions. I pray for these men and women, they're a part of this council. I pray that you would bless them in their personal capacities and their finances and every aspect of their life, their families. Father, just let them know how important that they are to you. And I pray that you would just give them wisdom and discernment. I thank you for the gifts and graces that every one of them have, that brings to bear, the experiences that you have taken them through. It's important for the diversity of this city, for each of them, to bring those to bear. But Father, we pray today that as decisions get made here, that we would have one mind, and that's the mind of Christ, that you would bring us together under consensus, that we would go in a direction that would bring glory and honor your kingdom. And we pray all of this in the power and the confidence that always comes when we call on the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen, amen, thank you. If you would join us as we offer the flag of the United States and Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you so much, you may be seated.
Thank you, Teagan. Looks like we have no citizen comments today, so we will move to Agenda Item Five, which is our minutes, March nineteenth of 2024, Special City Council Meeting. Our March nineteenth Special City Council Meeting with EUB and April ninth Regular City Council Meeting. Is there a move to approve? Thank you, Ms. Martines Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item five point one, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We are now moving to our consent agenda, and we have a few things we'd like to kind of bring out and highlight with council's approval. I will discuss these and then come bring those back in for a vote. But we're gonna have six three, six point four, six point one six, six point one nine, six point two two, and six point two seven. So I think I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over on six three and six four to Mr. Atkinson. Those are ARPA funds and some minor changes. And then if council has questions or we have to pull staff up here, we can certainly have that available. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Item six point three is part of our ARPA projects, American Rescue Plan Act. Specifically, these are the affordable housing projects. The item before you today is to increase the appropriation to specifically the Habitat for Humanity project in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. This is a previously approved project. Habitat took their bids in for what they called Phase One of the infrastructure. Remember, the city's support is the public part of it, so the roads, the pipes, et cetera. Because of that, there is an ability with this additional funding to expand the project and actually allow Habitat to get started on these first-time homebuyer projects in what they call Phase Two. So, carrying this in, we have an amendment of two hundred and fifty thousand total, a portion of which was already there, savings. The additional request is one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. The source of the hundred and thirty-six thousand is carried interest that the city has been accumulating on ARPA dollars that have not yet been spent out of the door. So that will carry that one. The next item, still within six point three, is related to what we call the homelessness project. Counsel, you'll remember, this one's been adjusted up, it's been adjusted down. We had kind of a bookkeeping problem that we needed to clarify, so what we're bringing back to you today is a request to add two hundred thousand dollars. This also will be from interest. This is specifically to include the Public Health Department's plan to set up what is called an intermediary, intermediary, excuse me, care clinic. This will be at the new facility at Fiftieth and Avenue U. Cooperative projects with the Texas Tech University Health Science Center. This is to hire a doctor that will serve as a fellow and to run that clinic. And they will start July of two thousand and twenty-four. So again, the request is for two hundred thousand. This also is coming out of the carried interest that we have. Any questions on either of those two items?
Mr. McBrier?
So this first year, I guess, is funded out of the carried interest. What about ongoing years for this staff person?
Not sure how that's gonna be carried in year two, but we do have Bill Howardson here, and I think he can answer that for us.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, Bill.
That second year is gonna be funded through the Health Science Center and the County of Lubbock, or Lubbock County. So they're picking up that second year. And we hope to have other funds come in. We'll have to, when we get there, we'll have to find those funds, whether they're through a foundation or through another federal government grant.
Bill, you might stick close, I think Ms. Joy also has some questions.
Yes, Ms. Traurton, I don't think people are really aware of this intermediary care clinic. Would you tell us why this clinic is necessary?
You have a lot of folks out in the community that don't have a primary care physician. They're going into the hospital, being released, their care disappears. They're not staying on their meds, and they're not following any of the protocol that they're supposed to be following. This care clinic will allow them to have care and medicines and case management for sixty to ninety days as that's taken care of, and they identify their own.
Have you started the clinic at this point in time?
Clinic has not started.
Okay.
She won't get here till the end of June, and will start that Monday, the first Monday in July.
And in connection with that, since this is going to be at the city-county health department?
Yes, ma'am.
When, when are we moving in to that facility?
I've been told that the first week of July is when we're targeting move-in.
Okay.
Yeah, I might be able to add a little to that substantial completion. For that project is June the ninth. So the contractor will start on the punch list, those final items. We were trying to get moved in so that we can start on July first. It will carry over through a portion of the month, so you'll bring an operation in, add one, add one, and just keep going.
I think the community should be excited about the new health department, which is at Fiftieth and Avenue U. It's been a long time coming because it's been in a place that has, it's worked. The staff has made it work, but it's outgrown that facility greatly. So I'm really looking forward to, to the opening on that.
We look forward to you guys coming and taking a tour of it, too.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, Ms. Patterson Harris?
Mayor, I just wanted to say that I am so excited to see the progress that has been made on the new facility right off of Fiftieth Street in the, what is it, the seventeen-hundred block, which is located in District Number Two. However, I can really relate to the fact of those individuals within the community who are leaving hospitalization and not having any follow-up care. That was one of the first things that met me when I came into office, and I was like, how do, how do you address this, how do you address this? Now knowing that we are at this point that we will be able to address those types of situations. It was just that one individual that reached out to me, but I know that there are so many more, so many more who will need the care of this particular program. I just appreciate the city of Lubbock and the city of Lubbock Health Department for recognizing the need and doing something about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your support, all of you.
All right, thanks, Bill.
You bet.
All right, six point four, Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. Item six point four is the second item we have on the agenda today related to ARPA. This is specifically out of the parks allocation, more specifically than that. One of the original funded projects was to put field lighting on the remaining unlit field at the Tom Martin Youth Sports Complex. That is done, the lights are up, all is good. That allocation, we had a savings of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and two dollars, so it's money that's already in that account. We are requesting to take those dollars, the thirty-three thousand, four hundred and two, and move those into a subset of that same parks project, specifically the parks restroom programs. What we've ended up, we've got two of those, CLAP and Maxi, to where the restrooms are having to be built up approximately three feet to get the floor level above the flood level, and it's gonna cost us a little more dollars to do that. So that is the request there. It is not new money, it is not interest money, it is savings from the lighting project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any questions on four point, or excuse me, six point four? All right, well, let's go ahead and move over to six point one six. I believe we, this is a second read of a minor change in our definitions on impact fees. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor, that is correct. Also, council, quick reminder, this change is coming to you as a recommendation of your Capital Improvement Advisory Committee in their annual report. What this does is address the specific situation of where a redevelopment project can be exempt from paying a new impact fee. So what it is, is cleaning up some definitions. So we're talking about previously occupied. The existing building was issued a certificate of occupancy and at some time was being used for its intended purpose prior to the current and new use. So previously occupied is the operative change to that. Second part of the change is that the total square footage is not increased by more than one thousand additional square feet. So take a building that at one time was legally and lawfully occupied, likely is not anymore, could, could be, but it doesn't have to be, and a person is allowed to come in and redevelop that if they do not change the total square footage by more than one thousand square feet. And if they meet both of those qualifications, they will be exempt from paying an impact fee on that project. Whole purpose is to encourage redevelopment of existing facilities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any questions on six point one? All right, very good, let's move to six point one nine. I believe this is a change order facilities?
Also correct, Mayor, this is contract amendment number one, also known as a change order. This is with Henthorn Construction. This is for our new joint public health facility at twenty fifteen Fiftieth Street. Total amount of the change order is one hundred ninety thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. As compared to the original contract total, that is two point three four percent. So certainly congratulations to Henthorn that any redevelopment project, remodel project, is always tough. They've carried us through that very well. These changes are from items that just were not in the original design. Some storefront changes, remember, a portion of that building is a separate storefront, and some nurse call systems that will go into the clinic rooms. Again, mentioned it earlier, the projected substantial completion date of this project is June the ninth, and the final completion date, August eighth, moving in starting early July.
All right, we have a few questions here, Ms. Patterson Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, just a statement. I just wanted to make sure that we continue to provide that information for citizens with regard to the health department and just keeping up with that and the anticipation that's going on. And the great thing is because there is a savings with regard to some of the construction that is there, and I think that's something that definitely needs to be noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. All right, we'll move to six point two two. This is ordinance changes regarding speed limits and school zones. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Six point two two is for school zones. These are five new school zones located at two, two different schools. So clarification, a single street that abuts a school that has a school zone on it is considered a separate school zone to do that. The two schools are Roscoe Wilson Elementary and Ridgewood Elementary. And of course, Ridgewood is the new Friendship Elementary that is coming online. So what are we doing at Roscoe Wilson? Twenty-fifth Street, there will be two twenty-mile-per-hour school zone sign assemblies. Roscoe Wilson on Twenty-sixth Street, two twenty-mile-per-hour flashing beacon assemblies. At Ridgewood, work will be on Zadar Street, that is Z-A-D-A-R. That is your twenty-mile-per-hour school zone sign assembly. On Fifty-fifth Street, adjacent to Ridgewood, there will be two twenty-mile-per-hour school zone sign assemblies. And on Xenia Avenue, there will be one twenty-mile-per-hour flashing beacon assembly be installed.
Ms. Joy?
Will be constructed over the summer.
Yes, ma'am.
That we are telling us, and I would hope that when we get back to school starting again, that we would remind people that these, these schools have a change. And I think sometimes we tend to ignore those speed limits. So let's keep in mind that we need to continue to let the public know about these, these changes. I'm sure a lot of the public doesn't know where Ridgewood is. Roscoe Wilson is in the heart of Lubbock, so they do. But it's important that we take care of our kiddos' safety.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other questions or comments on six point two two? Mr. Mc...
So the, the signs will be on, in the Roscoe Wilson, since that's a block from my house in my district. The signs will be on Twenty-fifth Street, the flashing beacon's on Twenty-sixth Street. Will they be within the block the schools are in, or will they be the block prior to that, or?
They'll, they'll be at the beginning point of the school zones, which is basically the adjacent pieces of those blocks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McBrier. We'll now move to six point two seven. So this, council, six point two seven is just the appointment, I think this is interlock. This is a joint agreement between the county and the city to appoint magistrates, who typically will do fifteen, seventeen hearings at the jail. And that's appointing Melissa McNamara, Jarrett Greaser, Roland Rivera, Travis Sandoval, Dwight McDonald, Sarah Hudman, and Brooke Dacus. And so I think this is just a joint agreement. I think this has been in place for quite some time, and we're just adding a few new names to this and, and appointing these parties. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, and in effect, they are reciprocal appointments to help accomplish, accomplish the magistrate duties.
And we also have Judge Hernandez here, if anyone has any questions or comments from Judge Hernandez about these appointments. Ms. Patterson Harris?
I actually kinda made a note of this because we are right next to municipal court. And day in and day out, we have tons of folks making their way past this building to get there. And anytime there's some additions, some subtractions or multiplications to that location, I like for the public to know, even if it is with them serving as a magistrate, even at the county facility, so that they deal with that, those concerns there. But since Judge Hernandez is here, he may be able to shed a little bit of light and let us know maybe who those folks are or what have you.
Well, thank you. And first of all, good afternoon, Mayor, and distinguished members of the city council. It's great to be back in front of you all. And Ms. Patterson Harris, I knew you were not gonna leave office without bringing me up to talk to you during a city council session. So yes, this is an interlocal agreement, and the mayor was correct. Interlocal agreement between the city and the county for fifteen-seventeen magistration, which means it's, it's the magistration that takes part whenever a person is arrested or given an instander citation. The, these magistrations take part over at the county courthouse, and they're actually done by Zoom. And so the judges do it by Zoom over from Judge McNamara's office over at the county courthouse. It's the same list that we've had. We've added two new magistrates, or we're trying to add, and Sarah Hudman and Brooke Dacus, because we have lost a couple of magistrates in the past. The latest one being Magistrate Kevin Hart, who retired and moved to Houston, or is moving to Houston. to Houston. So magistration will not be taking part over at Lubbock Municipal Court. It's going to be done over at the county, like I said, through a Zoom hearing.
All right, thank you very much, Judge Hernandez. I do have a question in the information in the backup. It says one or more qualified persons, and I know several on this list, does very, very well.
I knew you were going to bring that up, Mayor. No, they're qualified. In fact, they went, they had to submit an application, Judge McNamara, myself, and the Board of Judges over from the county courthouse, we all reviewed them. And one of the things that was very important to me, besides being licensed for at least five years and in good standing with the state bar, was that they were citizens of the city of Lubbock, Texas. That's been an issue in the past, but I think we've ironed that out with the county.
They are all very, very good people and very good attorneys.
They are, they are excellent.
So thank you, thank you for your work on that.
Any other questions?
We appreciate you.
Thank you all so much.
We're going to see you back here shortly, so.
Yeah, we're going to see you in a little bit back, and ma'am, thank you for calling me up again.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Judge. All right, so we have six point one through six point three-four. We'll put those back in. Is there a motion to approve six point one through six point three-four?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, second by Ms. Patterson-Harris. Okay, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, six point one through six point three-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda carries seven zero. We're now moving to our regular agenda. Seven point one, counsel, is consider taking action to the appointment of Mr. Matt Wade. Mr. Wade, do you want to wave in the back back there for us? We are so excited to have Mr. Wade joining us. He will officially begin as the city attorney on June the third. I know he's got a few more things to wrap up, but today we are asking to ratify the appointment that we've done in executive session and also authorize the mayor to execute a severance agreement that you have and your backup and available to you between Matt Wade and the city of Lubbock. And yet we'll be doing more formal things with you, Mr. Wade, when you begin on June the third, but that's what's before counsel today. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve agenda item seven point one. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Third, by Ms. Joy, and a fourth by Dr. Wilson, a fifth by Ms. Patterson-Harris, a sixth by Mr. McBraer, I think. Is there any further discussion or questions? I think I can speak behalf, on behalf of counsel, that we're very excited to have you, sir. All in favor of approval of seven point one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to appoint Mr. Matt Wade as our new city attorney, beginning June the third, and to approve the severance agreement carries seven zero. All right, another good news, we have agenda item seven point two. This is a resolution for the city to ratify and confirm the appointment of our new police chief, Mr. Atkinson. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We are continuing in somewhat of the same vein. In Lubbock, Texas, we are a civil service city for both the Police Department and the Fire Department. There is a component in the state civil service law that says the chief executive will appoint either of those two chiefs, but then confirmation by the City Council is required. That is what our item is today. We do have Chief Herman in the back. He can raise his hand real quick. There we go. So counsel, just a little bit of background. Chief Herman was one of four very highly qualified finalists that we were able to produce as we went through our search process. That search process began in January of this year, and it culminated just a little over a week ago. Each of these individuals has really been put through the wringer, applications, writing assignments, video interviews, lots of research, multiple in-person interviews, as well as a public meet and greet session, and I know many of y'all were able to attend that as well. Our meet and greet session, I would say, was very successful this year. We received thirty-one written or electronic submissions as a result of that meeting, in addition to a number of individuals who I was able to catch as they were leaving and just kind of do a mini interview on them. Also, each of the four finalists had an opportunity to visit with the executive board of the Lubbock Professional Police Association. Following that, then, I was able to sit with that same group and get their observations, their thoughts on all of those. Specifically, in the case of Chief Herman, as he rose to the top of this qualified group, conducted a little additional reference research, visited with many people, am very pleased to report back that in all cases, what I heard back was very, very good. So it is my opinion, and it is my appointment, to recommend to you Chief Seth Herman. And based on this, I respectfully request your ratification and confirmation. Should you do so, June the third will be a great day, because not only will Mr. Wade start with us, so will Chief Herman. Mayor and counsel, I'll take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Let's go ahead, if there is, I'd entertain a motion to approve agenda item seven point two. Thank you, Mr. McBraer, seconded by Dr. Wilson. Are there any questions of Mr. Atkinson? Any comments or anything counsel would like to state before we vote on seven point two? Ms. Joy?
Mr. Atkinson, transitions are always difficult, so I would be interested in knowing why you felt like Mr. Herman was the person for the job here in Lubbock.
Certainly. Numerous things. Has all of the educational requirements, the career achievements, certainly is a West Texan, just like the rest of us, he's just right down the road, very familiar with Lubbock. As we went through this process, Chief Herman's, what he told us, what we learned in the interviews and when we called people, his ability to connect first and foremost with his officers, with the men and women who are on the street, but also his ability to do so with the community as well, speaks very, very highly. His current department, Midland, that community has a lot of the same challenges that Lubbock does, they have some that we don't, but I've watched as you chronicle his career as the chief of police there, her ability to have a positive influence on the crime rate and to drive that down, and that certainly is job one for us. Drive the crime rate down, bring the community with us. The long-term goal for our police department is to achieve recognition or accreditation through one of those bodies, but those first two are what we want immediately. On a personal level, I think you will all find the chief to be very relatable, and I think he's going to fit in well with us.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. McBraer?
Yeah, Mr. Atkinson, I wanted to thank you again for a very good process of bringing forward four good candidates and getting us, I think, I speak for myself, the person I thought was best suited to lead us here. We all know public safety is job one. We appreciate the efforts of Chief Rushin to work with us in the transition. We're working very hard to bring the crime rate down in Lubbock, and we've seen some good results over the last year. We hope to continue that under our new chief, and we just welcome him here and know he's got a big job in front of him, but we're happy to have him here, and thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. All right, we have a motion and a second on seven point two. All in favor of approval of agenda item seven point two, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we will welcome Chief Herman, as well as our new city attorney, as seven point two carries seven zero, on June the third. Big day. I think Ms. Patterson-Harris will only have twenty-two days left after June the third hits. She's not counting. All right, now we'll move to seven point three. This is consider and take action on a binding term sheet for the purchase of what we have for several years now termed Lake Seven. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor, and no, once again, you're right on track. If I could direct everybody's attention to the screens around the room, this item is the approval of a binding term sheet to purchase all of the property that is within that yellow boundary. That is approximately one thousand four hundred and seventy-one acres. It's commonly known today as the V-eight Ranch, a historic and longstanding family ranch, and the site of your future Lake Seven. So Lake Seven is our next strategic water supply project. Counsel, as you know, water supply is a long-term game. In December of two thousand and six, the city of Lubbock started the process to apply for a state water right permit. In April of two thousand and twenty-four, we received that state water right permit. So we're on to the next step, acquisition of the property, and ultimately getting our federal permit, which comes from the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and that certainly is in progress. Back to the land itself, again, approximately one thousand four hundred and seventy-one acres. Counsel, the term sheet that you have, the binding term sheet in front of you, I think it's important to note, this is an all-inclusive transaction, so you're acquiring all of the various estates in the land to include the mineral estate. With this, plus the land that the city owns, which is generally on the north side of that yellow line, the side to the top of the page, you will have the vast majority of this lake already acquired as you begin the process to get that permit. Total sales price is fifteen point one million dollars. The expected closing date is just before or just after January one of two thousand and twenty-five. Counsel, the purchase would be financed through a water revenue bond. This is not something that goes ultimately to your tax rate, it entirely goes inside the water system. There is a leaseback for a period of time to two of those owners. Certainly think that's a very good thing. We don't need to be on there immediately, although we do have the rights to enter, to explore, to investigate, to continue the process of developing our lake. With that, would take any questions, counsel, that you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Counsel, let's go ahead and if I could get a motion to approve seven point three.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, seconded by Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, do we have any questions, Mr. Atkinson, first of all? Any specific questions? All right, and if you recall, this is just authorizing the signing of the binding term sheet. All right, any statements, Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. It's more, I think if the public hears the amount, it is a small price really for the big investment that we're making, and I just want to point out, with water being an issue for West Texas, we're way ahead of the game, and I think this is a great opportunity for our city. So thank you, Jarrett, and staff for all the hard work.
Agreed, and thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to commend the staff for this. This is, our community for years has been known for its investment in our water supply. We look at our water supply a hundred years at a time. Our investment in Lake Allen Henry has paid off. As a matter of fact, that debt is rolling off quickly, and so I, you know, we're probably one of the largest semi-arid cities in the nation that has the water supply that Lubbock has today, and so we're fortunate for the work. I'm grateful for the work the staff has done. They've continued the tradition of Lubbock's investment in water, and I look forward to Lake Seven coming online. Just as a reminder, just to take everybody back, the work we did two or three years ago with La Prino complements this project, and will make this even better. So again, thank you, I'm very supportive, and hats off to the staff on this one.
Agreed, as well. Ms. Joy?
Just a reminder that the water that goes in to Lake Seven is coming in from Lake Six, which our lakes are constant level because the water's coming in from the treatment plants, plus rain or whatever, and drainage. But the other thing you need to remember, this is not going to happen overnight, okay? It's going to take some time, but in this term sheet, feel like there's plenty of time for us to get this done, because it's so important to the city of Lubbock and the area.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, thanks, counsel. Thank you for that, Mr. Atkinson. We have a motion and a second on seven point three. All in favor of approval of seven point three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seven point three carries seven zero. All right, our next two items are regarding the election, the May fourth election. What we'll do, counsel here, is I'll turn it over to our city secretary, Courtney, to read in the results from the May fourth election. Then we will vote on seven point four. That first one is the special election for the proposed ordinance, and then the next will be our general election, and then the decision and the vote to move us to a runoff. All right, so we'll first start with seven point four, and I believe, Courtney, do they have that in?
Yes, sir, they're all laid out in front of y'all. Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, a special election was held on May fourth, twenty twenty-four regarding a citizen-led proposition, and I will read the results. Votes for received eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-two votes. Votes against received twenty thousand five hundred and sixty-three votes. There were thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five votes cast in this election. I recommend you accept the election return.
All right, thank you very much, Courtney, for that. Counsel, you should see that resolution before you, I think in your backup, it did not have the numbers, and now this does, as votes for, against, and then total votes cast in the election. Any questions of that from Ms. Paz? All right, seeing none? Oh, Ms. Joy.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. All right, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve seven point four with the information provided by our city secretary. Thank you, Mr. McBraer. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Okay, all in favor of approval of seven point one, seven point four, excuse me, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion to approve that resolution carries seven zero. Now we will move to seven point five, and I will turn it over to you, Courtney.
Thank you, Mayor. A general election was held on May fourth, twenty twenty-four to elect mayor, city council members for districts two, four, and six, and a municipal court judge. I will read the results as well into the record. Candidates for mayor, Stephen Sanders received two thousand two hundred votes, Steve Massengill received eight thousand seven hundred thirty-nine votes, Adam Hernandez received six thousand three hundred and fifteen votes, Colton Bacon received three hundred twelve votes, Mark McBraer received eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-two votes, Antonio Tony Renteria received one thousand eight hundred and ten votes. There were a total of thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-eight votes in that race. Nobody received a majority of votes for that particular election. Candidates for city council, District Two, Michael Lestus Mitchell received four hundred seventy-eight votes, Gordon Harris received one thousand one hundred ninety-two votes, Anna Menharez received one thousand eighty-eight votes. There were a total of two thousand seven hundred fifty-eight votes in that race. Nobody received a majority of votes for that election. Brayden Rose was an unopposed candidate for District Four and received seven thousand sixty votes. Tim Collins was an unopposed candidate for District Six and received three thousand three hundred and thirty-six votes. Jorge E. Hernandez was an unopposed candidate for municipal court judge and received twenty-three thousand two hundred and twelve votes. The total votes cast in this election were thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight. I recommend you accept the election return and call a runoff election for the mayoral position in city council, District Two.
Thank you, Courtney. All right, counsel, again, you have that resolution in front of you with the information. I'd entertain a motion to approve seven point five.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Dr. Wilson, do you care? Okay, thank you. All right, I have a motion from Ms. Joy and seconded by Mr. Massengill. All in favor of approval of seven point five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. All right, so I want to thank everyone, first of all, who voted in this election. Preach that from the rafters about the civic duty, but it was a good turnout, we're pleased with that, and thank you to all of our election workers. Thank you, Courtney, to your office, Jimmy, everyone's hard work, the county elections office, and of course, the candidates. We're very grateful to everyone in the process. And so today, we'll be turning to a new chapter on the Lubbock City Council, and that will start at five o'clock, we will begin that. But we've got- But we've got a little bit of business to take care of before we adjourn. So there will be a lot of new faces, not only in June, but also in July, and new leadership, bring new ideas, new ways of thinking, and new public servants ready to make our homes better. And with every new beginning comes an end, and today we're saying goodbye to a lot of knowledge, seniority, and great people. So Mayor Pro Tim Patterson-Harris will be here during the runoff in District 2, and council members Massengill and McBrayer are vacating their seats, although they'll continue their race for mayor. So today, we just get to say goodbye to one special person, and that's Councilwoman Latrell Joy. So I've had the pleasure of knowing Latrell for nearly 24 years. She doesn't remember probably when she was dealing with a young whip of attorney 24 years ago, but I've had the pleasure of knowing her and seeing her work in the courtroom and work with clients and work here for the last 12 years, serving her city. She's a longtime resident of Lubbock. We like to talk about our small-town roots because we both grew up, it seems like in the sticks, maybe.
We did.
But she has an incredible legal mind, she was tenacious, you kind of didn't want to mess with her, and she's done tremendous work for not only her district, but the City of Lubbock, and she has served her community proudly. Few projects she helped spearhead that I know she's proud of are the Burl Huffman Soccer Complex, the Future Hope Center, the Plan Lubbock 2040, UDC, this building we're sitting in today, the new LPD headquarters right south of us, and there's so many other projects in her long 12 years of serving. So I would like to say personally, I know others would too, but well done, Latrell. So the staff has prepared a few gifts, we've got some things that, you know, a street sign, and we love the street signs, photos from her time in office, a nameplate, some challenge coins, and of course, that beautiful picture that hangs in the lobby.
It's all of the different places that we've opened in 12 years, and I don't think I have, I think we opened four fire stations since I came on council in 12 years. People, that's a lot of fire stations that were needed, and the fact that we were able to do that was because of the people who live in the City of Lubbock, willing to help pay for them, that's how they get paid for, for the most part. A few developers who not only gave us land for fire stations, but we also had some developers who gave us land for our, they're not subdivisions, our, no, they're not substation, patrol divisions, the North, South, and East Patrol Divisions. That's how you get things done in a city, is bringing everybody together to do good things. And so, I'm most grateful that we could do those because it affects the people who live in Lubbock. You know, the city is an organization. It's an entity that was created, or able to be created by state legislation, but it's just an organization. It exists for the purpose of taking care of the people who live in the city. They pay their taxes, they pay their fees, all of those things, but the city itself is just an organization. So don't ever forget that what we do here and what you guys out there do is to serve the people of the City of Lubbock. They're what's important, whether they're a homeless person on the street or the richest guy in town, it doesn't matter. We've got services that help all of the people who need help, and they're a lot, and they're growing because we are in some difficult times. I am very pleased that I was able to serve on the Texas Municipal League Board for six years because it gave us an opportunity to interact with other cities, and that's important. We don't stand here alone. I had been asked about what I thought was most gratifying and important to me, and I've kind of had to narrow that down a little bit because so much of it is, but the years of 2016 to 2022 were my favorite because we did so much. This building got started before 2016, and it was, you know, at the time was a little controversial, but we were sitting here with an old bank building that was crumbling into the street and was not functional, and we had an option to either tear it down or to fix it. I believe we made the right decision. We also started the Public Safety Project, which is all of the patrol divisions. We had our administration office in a situation that I wouldn't ask anybody to work in, but they'd been doing it. It started as a fire station and it became city hall. I actually went to city hall when it was over there, but it was in terrible condition, and they functioned over there. I didn't hear a lot of gripes, and that's probably because they didn't have time, they're too busy. But that needed to be done, and it was great that we were able to swap some property and get it right across the street from us. You know, we weren't going to build a new parking garage, but when one of the trucks fell through one of the ramps, we were left with no options, and so we did that. So we've got a neat campus. The municipal court was something that was also not in good shape, and so, we were able to do all of that, and we did it cheaper than we thought it would be, and yes, it costs something on the tax rate, but it's done. But we don't stop there. We don't stop there. You've got to continue as a council and a mayor to look to the future, and you've heard some of that today. We're in ERCOT, Joel. That was not easy. That started, I remember specifically when Mayor Pope said, "Why can't we get into ERCOT?" Because we were desperately looking for future sources of electricity. And we did it, and we are in, but it took a lot of foresight, it took a lot of questioning, and a lot of trips to Austin to get it done. But it's important for the City of Lubbock. I cannot leave without saying that the Health Department has been a priority for me because when I came on council in 2012, it was almost gone, and there had been attempts before that to make it gone. And in 2014, when we hired Catherine Wells, she began to turn it around, and she didn't do it by herself, she did it with staff, she did it with counseling, she did it with council approving budgets so she could have staff, so she could run her programs, and then on top of that, she figured out how to get grants and to continue the success of that Health Department. And along with that, she extended it to substance abuse, mental health, and you've heard about the clinic today that she has added to it, and all of this goes in a big circle because the other passion I had was homelessness. And when you have homelessness, you have substance abuse, you have mental health, you have people who need a hand up. So all of those efforts that everyone has been working on, including Echo West Texas, which is a new organization, the reach for having our own continuum of care so we can take care of the people who live in Lubbock. So with that, my last is, employees, I love you, you are all great, they are responsive, they do what they can, and sometimes they have to deal with us, and that's the hard part. But we have great employees, and in order to continue that, and when I say employees, I'm talking about police and fire, everybody, we have to continue to encourage those employees, give them a pat on the back, and tell them we love them.
Catherine, I'm still scared of her, so it's understandable. Ms. Joy, I'm going to make sure and tell Mr. Pope that you are the favorite mayor since you said 2016 to 22. But I really do thank you on behalf of the entire city for your service. 12 years is a lot of time to give back to your community. Council members McBrayer and Massengill, this will be your last meeting as a council member, and we had talked, and just so you know, I'd asked permission from both of these gentlemen that we recognize them after the runoff is over, so we could make this very special for Ms. Joy, and then we'll, of course, recognize Ms. Patterson-Harris in the last one. She and I've got a little bit of time left, and so that, those, yeah, how many days again?
53 days and 45 minutes.
And so we'll do that in June. So for now, if you're coming back, or if you're watching online, we will begin our regular city council meeting to swear in our new members at 5 o'clock for the oath of office. With that, on this 14th day of May, I will say for the last time with Ms. Joy sitting up here that we are adjourned.